Welcome everyone to Middlesex County Council, Tuesday, January 11th, 2022, 1:00 PM. I would like to call this meeting to order, but I also would like to give some remarks before we start our meeting. Currently, we're dealing with, as predicted, the highly contagious Omicron variant. I would like to take the time to assure you that our services, although strained, are still working hard and currently meeting the demands across the county. Special thanks to everyone who picked up extra shifts or worked extra hours over the holidays to keep things moving. The latest update from Middlesex London Health Unit says we are soon approaching 1 million shots administered. This truly is an amazing number and is a tribute to the hard work that Dr. Summers and his team are doing throughout the pandemic. It's my pleasure to volunteer past this past Sunday at the mobile vaccination clinic located in Dorchester. The paramedics and the served volunteers did a fantastic job of keeping the long lines moving. I received much feedback about the kindness and the competence shown by the paramedic service and services and volunteers. Four hundred and eight vaccines were administered that day. I received an update on the Luken Clinic held yesterday, and they were proud to relay the information that 400 people received their vaccination. I am so pleased that we are able to provide this service for our county and the residents. The mobile clinic will be rotating throughout the county. The locations and dates are available on our website and the health unit website, as well as municipal social media platforms. While our responsibilities are many during these difficult times, it's services like this that are very much appreciated by our residents, who may face accessibility issues, or students, or workers who struggle with scheduling and appointment. This truly is a service where we get to see our community and help ease the strain of the difficult months past. So, thank you. We're ready to start the meeting, and Marcy, I guess you've probably seen who's present and who's not present. Okay, so I'm going to ask now for provision for disclosure, junior interest in general nature thereof. Seeing none? Any business arising from the minutes? I'm going to ask for a mover for the minutes of the December 7th, 2021, meeting of the Middlesex County Council to be passed. Mover? Counselor Richard, seconded by Counselor DeVet. That's carried. Deputations? Seeing none? So now we have a notice of motion, a motion to extend the term of warden by Counselor John Brennan. So, uh, do you want to speak to this, Marcy? Is this something that you want to speak to, or is John going to go ahead and talk about his motion first?
I think Counsel Brennan will go ahead and give some background and speak for the motion, and then if there's a movement or a secondar, it can be debated a bit.
Okay, so Counsel Brennan, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As previous, on December the 7th, I did provide notice of motion to council in accordance with Sectional 11 by law 5968 with respect to the following motion, that the term of warden be extended from one year to two years, and that the necessary bylaw would be presented to council for approval. I did provide the clerk with notice of motion in writing. The reason I'm bringing this forward is I think the continuity of a two-year term is huge in respect to dealing with the mayor of London politicians, area politicians, and just the workload that the warden now sees at the county level. I think a lot of things come up, and one-year term doesn't give them the proper time to get adjusted and fulfill their role as warden, as I think Counselor Burkhard Jessen would attest to with her two years. I think that was a real benefit to county council to have her there for two years, and I think going forward, I think this would benefits greatly. With that being said, I would make a motion for this motion to put it on the floor, or someone would second it, so we can get it on the floor for discussion, and then we can go from there. Thank you.
Okay, so Counsel Brennan's asking for a secondar so that we can discuss this motion on the floor. Do I have a secondar? Counselor Cornielsen? Seconded. All right, so I'm opening a floor to discussion. Who would like to offer their comments or opinion? Counselor Mayhew, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, John, for bringing that forward. While there may be some benefits to having a term of warden for two years, there's some downsides as well, and I think they should be part of the discussion. If we were to attract a younger demographic to municipal politics, an employer of a warden may tolerate a one-year term, but may have reservations with a two-year term as an encumbrance on his employee's responsibility. And further to that, there are some in municipal councils that envision their position as a one-year term or a two-year term at the very most. Having a two-year term in the warden's chair will reduce the opportunity of he or she sitting in the warden's chair substantially. We have recycled wardens in the past on several occasions. Recycling a two-year term warden is not as probable as a one-year term warden. We all have the capabilities and certain visions. Less wardens mean less visioning and new ideas. And I think we can't escape the subject that the last two years of past wardens was largely brought, the last two years of past wardens largely brought about by a global pandemic. We all hope that a return to a more normal environment will come to be. And the aspects of a one-year term, I think, has its benefits. I respect John's notice of motion, but I want to bring to council that there are some downsides to it. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Mayhew. Anybody else? Yes, Counselor Vanderheiden.
Thank you through the warden. I deliberated on this one quite a bit over the last couple of days, and I tried to put the columns together, you know, pros and cons, and the one pro definitely is continuity. And yet, continuity is an interesting conversation, because if you became warden at the end of a term, and something happened, and you needed to be cross-over a term, how are you ever going to do that? Because then you'd have to be warden for four years, you couldn't be warden for two years. So the logistics are a little bit off there. I believe, and I've been warden before, and so I speak from some knowledge, I believe that it's an opportunity to be the leader of the county. It's a position, and it's a positive thing for each person, each councillor that wants to. Not everybody wants to be warden, but for anyone that wants to be warden and has the opportunity, you grow, you learn, you understand the issues a lot more, you understand the staff that we have a lot more. There are so many things that you learn and have opportunities at when you become warden. You get to go to the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, you learn the different players around the area. And I think it's a growth thing, and I can tell you, when I was warden in 2006, which was forever ago, I grew as a leader tremendously by doing all those things. And I think if you've done a good job, you can run again the second year. There's no reason why you can't run again. But if we do this, we close the opportunity for at least half of council to never have the opportunity to become warden. Because if you only do one or two terms as a councillor or in your own, or a mayor, deputy mayor in your own municipality, you will never have the opportunity if we close it to a two-year term. And I don't think that does not sit well with me forever, at all, because I think everyone needs the opportunity. And if we have something that happened like last year, and Counselor Burkhard Jessen did an awesome job, you know, that was a blip in the system with COVID. But we all backed our councillor because we knew she was doing a good job, and she had a handle on what was going on because of COVID. And I think that's valid, and she did an awesome job. But I really don't want to not have other people have the opportunity, because we closed the ranks to two-year. I can't think of a single reason other than continuity for doing two-year term. I just absolutely can't unless maybe someone tells me one. I just believe that we all should have the opportunity to become warden, and you can run, and you can run a second time, you can run all four years if you want. If you can get council talked into having you as a four-year warden, there's no reason why you can't. But everyone has to have that opportunity. So I am going to vote against this, absolutely, because I don't think it's right that we cut off the opportunity for other people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, opinions? Yes, Counselor DeVet, then Counselor Cornielsen.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to the former wardens. I have a question about your experiences as representatives to the Western Ontario Caucus. This was something that I didn't have information on, and I thought, I'm not sure who all understands what is involved there, and how effective we are, and what impact we have in that forum. If somebody could comment and maybe highlight how that role is filled and how we are able to be effective there, I would appreciate that information. Thanks.
If you want me to start, Madam Warden, I could begin that conversation, and then I'll just pass it off to Curtis or Brad, or Kathy. It is, it's an opportunity to go and meet the different wardens across the county, or across the 15 counties. And they'd also change, like they don't stay the same. Some have a two-year term, some have a four-year term, some are just one-year terms. So it's different across the board. When you're there, you bring the issues that you have in your own community in Middlesex County forward. So you bring the Middlesex County issues forward that you hear on our own council table here. You also discuss the issues that are happening there, and a lot of them overlap, like economic development, etc., and broadband, and like the different issues that we deal with all the time, they're just dealing with it at a bigger level of more people and more counties. And that's where a lot of those discussions happen. Now, every council around this table already has an understanding of those issues, because there are things that we deal with all the time, but you're discussing it with a bigger region.
Okay, any other wardens liking to give feedback to Counselor DeVet? Yes, Counselor Smith?
The, thank you, Warden. The only thing I'd like to add to Counselor Vanderheiden's comments is with that continuity piece and seeing if it goes from a one-year to a two-year, I do see some value in that at the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. But at the same time, you know, with Counselor, when Counselor Burkhard Jessen was the warden, you know, she asked me some questions when she first jumped on this seat as warden, and it's really relying also on the past warden as well to get that information, you know, as to what's going on in those last, you know, in the previous year. So there is already that continuity is what is already there in place. But I can see that there is value there, having the same person sitting there for two years or four years. But at the same time, I did have a conversation with Bill about Western Ontario Wardens Caucus when I was warden, and I could see value in having, you know, appointing somebody to that, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. And I think that's something that I think we should have a conversation with Wousey about, is having it so then, because we do have a one-year term. So we would generally have four different wardens sitting there in the four years, or maybe three, like it is in this term. So I think there is some value in that, you know, as a separate conversation of this. If we want to have continuity at the caucus, we could maybe talk to them about having it so it's like an appointed position, just like it is with our other committees.
Any other? Yep, go ahead, Counselor Burkhard Jessen.
Thank you, and through you, Warden, to Counselor DeVet. I probably am not the best person to speak about the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, because I think I've spoken to many of you offline about my experience. That was the one area that I really did feel disconnected with. And even though I was warden for two years, and you think, okay, I've built all these relationships, I do think that the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus is built a lot on relationships. And I only had one in-person meeting before then everything went virtual. I didn't have a, I didn't have already a relationship with so many of those people that sit around the table. And so I was, you know, fighting a virtual world, trying to get up to speed with everything that the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus was taking on, trying to get to know my colleagues around that horseshoe. And I think, like, as, you know, there's a number of meetings that happen throughout the year, but as elected officials, we only meet, I think it's four times a year. So for me to develop those relationships and get up to speed, there were so many other things going on that that unfortunately was not a priority in my term. I would say that I do think that there is value with Wousey and, you know, two years, being there for two years. Because, as I say, they only meet as elected officials, you're only there for four, I think it's four meetings, I would have to look for Bill for confirmation on that, because then, of course, all the CAOs meet on their own, and then elected officials meet. And it's, you know, you're kind of just learning about the issues or just taking something on, and then it would switch to somebody new. So I can see value to Counselor Smith's point. Would it be worth having a discussion, looking at it as an appointed position for two years? I could see value to that.
Okay, thank you. Any other, we don't have any other wardens lurking in the shadows here? No? All right, so we, Counselor, oh, sorry, Counselor Richards, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. I know, if you'd asked me about a month ago, I would have said, you know, the two-year term is maybe the way to go. But thank you, after meeting everybody, and this is something that I'd like to throw in into the mix too, having run for warden this past year, and got a chance to meet everybody pretty well, and had a chance to sit down, you would miss that part of it. It's the getting to know your neighbors and partners really good. So that's one thing about the one-year thing that is good as well. The two-year thing, I think if the past warden were to be sure that they sat on the City of London Committee and stuff like that, and we could maybe appoint them that way, and as Curtis says, do the Western Conference thing the same way, that would really ease a lot of my concerns. But I see value in both, but having thought about it since Christmas, I tend to lean towards the one-year term is still the way to go.
Thank you, Counselor Richards. Counselor Cornielsen, you were next in line after Counselor DeVet. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just feel that there is value in a two-year term, and I think some of the issues that some of the previous wardens had mentioned here would validate that. I think what Counselor Burkhard Jessen indicated there, that the learning curve to become familiar with that role was quite significant and substantial. I believe, you know, it can take a number of months, weeks' time to become comfortable in that role. And I don't think the role of warden is one to accommodate our role as councillors, or to provide us with an opportunity to be a ward, but rather, it is a role of the warden to be the leader of the county in a positive and constructive way. And I feel that a two-year term would accommodate that better than a one-year. I understand that they can, you know, we can run again for a second term, if you will. But I believe that that two-year commitment is critical to the success and the longevity of planning in the county.
All right, any other comments? Okay, I, oh, sorry, Counselor DeVet, I just saw your hand up.
Thank you. Through you to our council. The, as I say, there are pros and cons to both sides. The one thing that I haven't heard anyone mention either is, yes, we were in a pandemic, and that may change the way media and attention is spent, a time is spent in putting attention on different issues and where they're coming from, and how different levels of government are handling things like COVID in their jurisdictions. But at the same time, it seemed to me that when I spoke with members of the public, there was a lot of awareness of the county amongst people who typically really have no idea about that. And that partly was a function of seeing a consistent face at certain kinds of media events and at different tables, and involved in different conversations, so that the name Cathy Burkhard Jessen was said so many times over a period of time, that I think people actually figured out who the warden is and what their role is. And I didn't have that sense before, so I'm not sure that, I mean, you can spend, how you manage those things too, is, and a function of the circumstances in which you have to manage them too, I think are variables that we can't discount. But having said that, I think there is, the additional benefit might be the profile of the county with respect to the leadership and the role they have over a period of time might be, oh, I don't know, more top of mind to more people. And I don't think it's a bad thing, because, well, perhaps it's because we are called Middlesex. But people often are confused about municipal level versus county level and all the different tiers that we have. So I just wanted to put that out there too, is to say, I don't think this is necessarily easy, because there are pros and cons to both sides of the discussion, and I'm not going to reiterate. I think they're being brought out, but that was just one thing that I thought, and then maybe selective perception of my part too, maybe it's different depending on who the people of the past have been as well. My timeframe is a lot narrower than St. Joanne's, for example, so I'll leave it at that and go on to the next person then. Thank you.
And Counselor Vanderheiden, go ahead.
Yeah, if I could just talk to that comment quickly, you know, when I was warden, I was out in the county, and I was out in the city. I was at a gazillion events, so that's how we worked, that's how we worked, because that's what we did. Cathy was on TV and on radio all the time because of COVID. And because of the pandemic, she was involved in, and that's where, you know, it's a little bit different in how she managed her, everything on Zoom. I mean, we never had a single Zoom meeting ever when I was warden, and I was warden a number of times. So I still believe it's not broken. The system is not broken. You can run one year, you can run a second year, you can run a third or fourth year if you want. Why are we limiting the opportunity for some of us to run? Because you're going to only have opportunity for two people to be warden in four years. I really believe you can, you can, there are people out there in our council that I think would be awesome wardens, and they need the opportunity, and they're not going to get that opportunity. And you also represent your community when you're warden. Cathy, you didn't have that the first term so much, because we couldn't go anywhere, do anything. But remember, when you had your golf tournament, you were representing your community, you got to give some funds to someone, to some valuable donations in your community. There's so many parts of being warden that I feel that you all need the opportunity, and I, again, still will vote against this, because I don't see the value at all in tightening it down so nobody else has opportunity.
All right, um, yes, Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Warden. Everything that Counselor Vanderheiden said, I completely agree with. Every, you know, I think we're completely on the same mindset with the idea of a two-year term compared to one year. When you think about the folks on the screen, we have four past wardens and our current warden. And if that was shortened, if you, as Joanne just mentioned, if that was only allowed to have two people per term, we would have that institutional knowledge wiped out in the future. There's only going to be so many past wardens on the screen. If you only have two new wardens, possibly new, there could be, you know, a repeat in future years. So that institutional knowledge of having, you know, more than a handful of past wardens around the horseshoe, that's huge in my mind. As well, when you're looking, everybody looks at the position of a warden a little differently. And I think if we were to change to a two-year warden, I think we're fundamentally changing kind of the checkboxes as to who you would like to see in the warden's seat. So I think that, as much as, you know, a one-year term, I think everybody would be able to, you know, take on that challenge. But for example, if you're in a larger centre, a larger municipality, and you're the mayor, you probably don't want to take away two years and focus at the county level. So there's certain councillors around the horseshoe that probably won't run for a warden anymore, because a two-year term, that is quite a commitment. So I think you're fundamentally changing that role by switching to a two-year term. And as Counselor Vanderheiden mentioned, and as I think Counselor Mayhew mentioned as well, if council sees fit that a second year is the right way to go, just like we did with Counselor Burkhard Jessen, I know Counselor Vanderheiden, you were, you know, a year four and then a year one, because there was such a changeover in council. I think that's a great opportunity, but just to have it changed to two years and only having two councillors become warden in a term, I just, I don't think that the value of that continuity really outweighs what the one-year term can do.
Counselor Mayhew? Go ahead, you have the floor. Counselor Mayhew, just unmute yourself.
Middlesex County is defined as a mosaic of municipalities. That's who we are, we're a family. And I think that that is, we're all part of a puzzle that creates a wonderful image being Middlesex County. And I think a two-year term is a deterrent to that. A one-year term illustrates what that mosaic is. It's the mayors of all these municipalities that compromise Middlesex County. And I think you take away from that identity by going a two-year term. So I have difficulty supporting the notice of motion and on those grounds. I think, I think our assortment of various personalities, the academic intelligence that we glean from being in that prestigious position is important, and I like to see that mosaic of municipalities entrenched and intact. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from councillors at this time? Counselor Elliott, you're really far back, so I can't tell if you're having your hand up or anything. Okay. So I'll move on to Counsel Burkhard Jessen.
Great, thank you, Warden. So it's been said, you know, I mean, obviously, my term as warden, or terms as warden, is being used as an example for the good and the bad of a two-year warden. And certainly, I would say, I mean, I enjoyed every minute of being warden, and I was proud to be able to say that I was warden for two years. And I do think the circumstances that we found ourselves in, the importance of continuity was highlighted. You know, I've gone back and forth on all of this, and I could probably give you arguments for both sides, for two years and for continuing the one year. I know personally, when I was nearing the end of the one year, if you took all of COVID out of it, and you looked at the normal business of the county, I felt that I was just getting my feet wet, and I was just getting into that groove of being, of understanding the departments, of getting to know kind of, you know, the behind-the-scenes players at the county, and getting a better understanding of that business. On the flip side, you know, being warden, as has been mentioned, that has been mentioned by others, it is a huge commitment. You are taken away from your municipality and asking your municipality to essentially give you up for two years. You know, that's a huge ask of some of our smaller communities. And there's no question, any of us could do it. We all bring a different flavour to the role. And, you know, I would echo a number of the arguments that Counselor Smith brought in, brought up, excuse me, about, you know, the knowledge base and the continuance of that. But in the end, I have to speak from my experience, that's the experience that I know. And I do think that a two-year warden term is something that is worthy of exploring. I think that there's great benefit to that, to keeping the higher profile of the position, the higher profile of the community up there. And I think that it's best done with a two-year term, and I would like to see that explored.
Okay, anybody else while we're still on the topic? Counselor Mayhew, yeah?
Madam Warden, I ask for a recorded vote, please.
Okay, before we get into going into a definite yes or no? Okay, before we get into going into a definite yes or no, I think what we all should think about is just going back to staff for a minute. And I, and I just want to backtrack and say, first of all, thank you to Councilor Brennan for bringing this forward. I think there's some things in this discussion that came out that we hadn't necessarily considered before. Um, the appointment maybe to somebody to the Wardens Caucus, uh, might be something that'd be very beneficial over the four years because it is a regional approach and it does take a long time to get that, um, whole perspective through. So, you know, I think these conversations are valuable. I really am impressed by the, um, the conversation that we're having here. But I'm just going to give Marcy or Bill a chance, um, to speak to this, just to see what this would look like or how this would happen if, um, this went through today because these things are not always as simple as they, they seem. So whoever would like to address this, whether it be Bill you, or Marcy, or both of you, I would appreciate your input on this.
You want to go first, Marcy?
Sure, um, I would just say that, um, procedurally, this does have some implications as it would be, uh, likely a governance change under the Municipal Act. Uh, so referring it to staff, um, to prepare a report about the administrative process and any potential challenges that, that may be there, uh, is something that I think would be beneficial if, if there's appetite to continue the discussion. Uh, I don't know, Bill, if you want to add to that?
No, I think there was, I think initially when John raised it, um, I think three things popped into my brain that are, like, uh, I, I don't want to comment on the politics of it, but on, because you've all debated that. But I think the administrative thing, I think there was three things that popped into my mind. I think I've satisfied myself on two of those administrative things that we would be able to find a way to work around them. And, um, like, I, I, I can be pretty quick about what I was thinking about. I was thinking about, is this a, um, something that needs a triple majority? Um, is this something that's going to require a, a, a complete approval by lower tiers and upper tiers? All of that type of stuff, I, I thought about that. Um, I thought about timing, I thought about when it would have to be done by and about what that process would look like. And then finally, I thought about, um, the only issue that's left in my brain really is, um, a gray question that I really don't think we're going to be able to answer directly. I think that, um, in my mind though, um, and it wouldn't really be up to me if it was challenged, it would be up to a judge. But in my mind, this is a, a governance change and that would mean you would have to fully comply with the Municipal Act. I think Marcy's being polite in saying, you know, we'd have to go back and review this and put it forward. And that, because that is true, we would, and we'd get you a second opinion. But my strong opinion is this is a governance change. I mean, I don't know who could argue that it isn't. Um, and then that would mean you'd have to comply in other ways. That would change, that would mean you'd have to comply with all the ways that you, um, have to comply with the Municipal Act in terms of governance. And as you know, there's one area in particular where we're offside in the current, with the current legislation. So I think that's what we come back and tell you. I don't think we're going to find anything different because there isn't anything definitive on, like, if you go and ask Municipal Affairs, which I have several times, what's your definition of a significant governance change? They're not going to give you an answer. They're not even going to tell you that they're going to police it. The last time I talked to Ian about this, he said, "Bill, we're not the ones that'll police that. There'll be a challenge and then someone else will, we just put the legislation in place." And that's quite the right answer. So there's, you're not going to get a black and white answer, but I know what I would say if I was someone adjudicating that. It is a governance change, clearly, and it's significant. And therefore, it would, it would bring into a question a couple of other things you'd need to consider. But that's what we'd say, but we'd write that in a report for you, I think, is what Marcy's saying. I don't think you have a different opinion, Marcy, on that, um, unless I, no, okay. So I think that's the only thing we'd add to the conversation, Warden. And, um, I don't think there's other things, Marcy, that I think are bothering us administratively. I can't think of other administrative issues. We haven't explored them all, I don't think. But that's still three that popped into my brain. Are there other ones, Marcy? I'm forgetting.
Um, no, you, you covered it. We just, there's certain requirements that, that bother us. Need a public meeting and, and all those things, but we would again.
Yes. Yeah, we'd put, we'd put those rules in place for you so you'd know how it can happen. Like, you just can't snap your fingers and make it happen. There's a process that would happen and then it would happen.
Um, Councilor Vanderheiden, I see your hand up.
So there is a motion on the floor. Um, what do we do for the next steps? Because I believe, um, I don't think today is the right day to do the vote. I think there's still other things that we need to discuss and whether we need to go back to a, a report from, from our, um, from our admin. Because if we just make a snap decision and the ramifications that we're not, that we're hearing threads of here come true that we don't even know about, I think that's a bad way of making decisions. So, um, whether we make an amendment, if, if John and, um, I think it was Kathy, or I don't know who the second or was, say that, you know, to offer the report, to ask for a report from councils, come back at a future meeting. I think that's the way to go. I'm, I am certainly not willing to, to go to a vote that, that we don't know the ramifications of.
So Councilor Brennan, I, your motion is on the floor. Would you consider having that motion amended to ask for a staff report? Um, or how would you like to, what are your thoughts on that?
No, that, that's fine with me. Absolutely. Uh, we've had a great discussion. I think, uh, to round it out, we need to have staff take a look at it and see what's involved there. So I'm fully in support of that. Thank you.
Okay, so, and we have, um, we have a question on the floor and I guess, could it be rephrased? I just want to check with the clerk. Can this question be rephrased to refer staff, uh, to prepare a report?
Yes, so we would need the motion to amend. So you need a mover and a second for the motion to amend, and then you could pass the motion to refer it to staff.
Okay, so do I have, so John, would you be a mover to amend then? Okay, and a second.
Yes, I will.
Okay, and a second. Councilor Connelly, all in favor? Okay, so, so moved, um, and we'll let Marcy come back with a report to the future date. Okay, thank you. And again, I, you know, it's, it's, it's hard when we're on Zoom. Um, it's easier when we're all together to have these discussions. But again, I think it's important and I, and I thank Councilor Brennan for bringing this report forward because gets our meeting off to a kickstart and we all have our opinions and get our things going here. So I look forward to the report back, Marcy, and thanks again.
All right, Warden, I, I got the motion to amend, but I actually need a motion to, uh, pass the motion to refer it to staff. So we've amended the vote, now we have another motion.
Okay, so, uh, mover for that motion, Councilor Mayhew. Second, Councilor Rock. Any other discussion before I call? Councilor Brennan, did you have your hand up for, okay, all right. So all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, and so Carrie, thank you. So does that clean up all our motions, Marcy? Excellent, good. So it's good to have the clerk right there watching. Any reports? And new business, uh, truck purchase. I believe this would be, uh, Mr. Trainee's report. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden. Uh, as many of you probably know, if you're in the market for a pickup truck these days, the supply is dry to nonexistent. So we, uh, traditionally, as council is aware, we pass our equipment replacement, um, schedule in the previous year for the coming budget year. Uh, and mainly because of the long turnaround time it takes for our large equipment to be manufactured, shipped, specialized, customized, uh, in order for us to have it available for the following winter. And really, the, the, the past practice has been we're keeping our vehicles to the point where we have, uh, expect reliability issues for our fleet to hold those pieces of equipment within the fleet longer, any longer period of time. And those pieces of equipment still have value, uh, in the resale market. But certainly, we're not in a position where we can risk the safety of the traveling public, risk our liability under minimum maintenance standards for that equipment to remain in the fleet. Pickup trucks are a little bit different. We do run our pickup trucks to the extent where they are at the point where we're having reliability issues or major repairs are expected. Uh, and in this case, um, in the last couple of years, we're, we're having some challenges in that we've kept equipment in the fleet longer than we had originally anticipated. Well, we are on, on a bit of an edge with regards to those pieces of equipment continuing to function as they're originally intended. And especially nowadays with, with the concern with the, the ongoing COVID pandemic, we are utilizing our fleet a lot more than we normally would, uh, simply because we're trying to, uh, ensure that our staff are not having to travel together in vehicles wherever possible. So trucks like this one that we're considering today are, are foreman trucks are actually being used by our staff. Foremen are, are basically trying to work from, uh, the district garages and their offices. And staff are utilizing this foreman truck to travel between job sites. So i- in our attempt to find replacement equipment, uh, you know, I've, I've tasked our staff to stay within our region, but look around the, the different dealerships around the, sort of the Middlesex, London, Middlesex area. We were able to find a, a truck, uh, at Oxford Dodge, um, that would meet our specifications for this type of, of vehicle. Uh, it's a little different than a normal work pickup truck and that has a shorter box. But again, it, it's satisfactory for what we need it for, for a foreman's truck. It is two-wheel drive and, and is within the scope of, of what we would normally specify for that piece of equipment. We did try to tender this truck out. We had no responses to our tender. Simply just not having the, uh, the reliability of the flow, uh, through the shipping crisis that's happening right now. The, the vehicles just aren't available. So we're lucky to find this truck. Uh, we did get a quote, uh, fifty thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars plus HST. Now, we did, uh, in the five-year, uh, equipment replacement guide, we did budget forty thousand for this truck, but it simply, uh, has really gone, uh, really changed quickly with the rise of inflation and the demands on the, on the truck market. Uh, and my recommendation is to get this truck, um, through this quotation, uh, simply because they're just not available in the marketplace. We do have other trucks that we're still looking for, two crew cabs and one more foreman's truck, uh, that will be bringing future recommendations to council. We, we may have found another foreman's truck, uh, just earlier this week, but, uh, unfortunately, our normal practice is not really available or tenable at this point in time. So, uh, I'm recommending that council approve this purchase outside of the normal, uh, tendering process for equipment replacement and be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions or concerns regarding the report by Mr. Trainee? Okay, then looking for a motion that the quote supplied by Oxford Dodge for the supply of a twenty-twenty-one Ram fifteen-hundred for fifty thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars plus HST be accepted. So looking for a mover? Councilor Mayhew, second by Councilor DeVito, all in favor? Uh, Carrie? Right, municipal modernization project, enterprise asset management software. Report from Chris Bailey, our IT manager, and Chris, you're.
Thank you. Thanks, Madam Warden, through you to council. Another modernization project update for everybody today. This one is pertaining to an enterprise asset management software solution. Um, as part of the municipal modernization program intake two, uh, the county as well as the local municipalities through the CAO working group, identified enterprise asset management, one of the top priority projects for the implementation and review streams. Um, providing asset management planning is an ongoing long-term process that allows municipalities to make the best possible investment decisions for their infrastructure assets. The county and local municipalities were seeking an advanced tool to coordinate asset management decision-making, reporting and implementation across departments, as well as streamline and automate ongoing activities. Uh, the integrated software solution will help municipalities manage, uh, asset service requests, complaints and work order processes, asset condition tracking, asset preventative maintenance, asset replacement and decommissioning, and financial asset reporting. Um, the project was approved and funded by the province for a total of up to four hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and one dollars uh, as part of the intake two. A request for proposal was developed in conjunction with the county ITS department as well as the participating local municipalities. Um, the intent of the RFP was to onboard an enterprise asset management solution that will allow the county and the participating local municipalities to maintain support, improve, um, business units across the organization by allowing users to leverage information and critical asset data for general purposes of optimizing the useful life of assets in the most cost-effective way. Um, the overall goal of the project is to obtain a highly intuitive system from a user perspective that can position the county as well as the local municipalities to take advantage of technology to improve overall performance and efficiency as required by Ontario Regulations five-eighty-eight slash seventeen. Um, the enterprise asset management software, RFP, was uploaded to bids and tenders on July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, and with a closing date for submissions of September third, twenty-twenty-one. Um, submission reviews occurred the week of September sixth with a selection committee that included, um, both county and local municipal staff. There were five proposals received and evaluated by the selection committee pursuant to the rated requirements of the RFP. Um, these rated requirements include strength of mandatory requirements, experience and qualifications, the training and implementation plans, and the proposed pricing model. Um, from a financial standpoint, the county and local municipalities, as I mentioned above, uh, did receive up to four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to fund sixty-five percent of this project. Um, as outlined in a report to county council on March ninth last year, we also allocated a hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars of our one-time modernization funds to offset that thirty-five percent. So the successful respondent provided a total project price across both the county and local municipalities of six hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. The total cost for Middlesex County is two hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and nineteen. Um, when taking into account the sixty-five percent offset, the total thirty-five percent of county's portion is eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents. Um, this pricing does include all requirements outlined in the RFP and the first year of licensing. With the funding that we received as part of intake two and our one-time modernization funds allocated, um, there will be no financial implications to the county until the renewal term. The successful respondent did provide an ongoing annual support and maintenance cost for the solution of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, um, to the county. I just noticed a typo in my report earlier today. Uh, the yearly cost is actually going to come in the twenty-twenty-three budget. The report says twenty-twenty-two, uh, but there is no impact on the twenty-twenty-two budget. The renewal date will be January twenty-twenty-three, so my mistake on that part of the report. From a strategic focus perspective, um, connecting through infrastructure as well as promoting service excellence. Um, I think this is about my fourth municipal modernization report. So I did actually something that didn't make it into the report. I wanted to extend a big thank you to Ebby and Hassan. Uh, for those of you who don't know Ebby, and she's our business and data analyst in the ITS department. Um, she's been a really important part of the modernization projects. Um, and she's helped out with from procurement to planning to now to implementation. So big thank you to her. Um, also a big thank you to all of the county and local municipal department heads, CAOs and staff who have been involved as part of the procurement processes, selection committees, implementation teams. Um, you know, over the past three years, we've had hundreds of meetings on these projects, so it's really appreciated. I, I really think the municipal modernization program has, has been a great indication of how well Middlesex County and our local municipalities can work together to achieve common goals. Um, recommendations that county council accept the selection committee's recommendation to award the RFP to PSD Citywide, approve the attached asset management software agreement, and that the necessary bylaw be presented to county council today to authorize the warden and county clerk to execute the agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Chris. Uh, any questions for Chris regarding the information he's given us today? Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Warden. Uh, Chris, we, I enjoyed that report very much. Southwest Middlesex has embraced asset management. Uh, we are in some ways ahead of the pack on it. Uh, I just, I think I mentioned it in a conversation perhaps to some of the councillors in the past. Uh, software management, uh, software costs have gotten, uh, exorbitantly, uh, important, uh, to small municipalities. Uh, we have a small municipality, our software costs now, we're in six-digit figures. It's a significant, uh, expense we have on an annual basis. Uh, could you comment, is there cost savings by, uh, uh, the municipalities banding together and working under a, a collective, uh, body as you mentioned in your report?
Absolutely. Um, we were able to leverage economies of scale on this. So an individual municipality signing up for the software would pay a lot more than the group buy, basically. And there was a total of seven, six local municipalities participated and Middlesex County. Um, so we were able to leverage that to get a fifteen percent discount on the software purchase as well as a ten percent discount on the yearly maintenance renewals.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Vanderheiden?
I would, I'd be willing to put the motion forward that the county accept the selection committee's recommendation toward RFP to PDS Citywide Incorporated and approve the attached asset management software agreement and that necessary bylaw be presented to county council to authorize the warden and county clerk to execute the agreement. I think asset managers, asset management is the way to go. And when we can use IT in order to get there, I think it's a benefit to each of our communities.
Great. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Mayhew? Any other discussion before I call the vote? Okay, now pay attention, I'm changing it up. All opposed? Okay, seeing none, motions carried. Thank you. Now moving on to counselors' comments and other business. Counselor Elliott, you have a motion here, resolution to support TVDSB trustee distribution twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six. Do you want to speak to this motion?
I do, yes. Thank you and through you, Warden. As this is an election year, a report will be coming in the next month or so to Thames Valley District School Board in regards to making a decision to the composition of the Board of Trustees for the Thames Valley District School Board. Middlesex County to Thames Valley District School Board is considered a low-population municipality, and therefore we do not meet the threshold in order to have two trustees as our representatives. However, by declaring us a low-population municipality, the calculations are adjusted to put us over that threshold. And it gives, it also gives an even urban rural divide on the Board of Trustees, as there are six representatives representing Middlesex, Oxford and Algen, and six representatives on the city of London. And so the motion and the letter and the motion that I have put in front of you is to support that advocacy to keep two trustees and Middlesex County by declaring us a low-population municipality, as well as to write some advocacy letters to ensure that happens when this comes before the Board of Trustees in March. And so I would put that motion on the floor if there's a seconder, so we can discuss if there's any questions.
Is, okay, Counselor DeVito? You're seconding the motion? Any comments? Counselor Vanderheiden? Then I see Counselor Mayhew.
Through the warden, just one question to Counselor Elliott. I don't recall this ever coming before us before. I could be wrong, but I don't remember doing this before. Is this something new? I have no, I have no objection to doing this if this is what we require. Just, it's never, I don't remember it ever occurring before, so.
Yes, through the warden, this does actually come to the Board of Trustees every election year to make this decision. I don't believe in the past Middlesex County has advocated to keep both of their trustee representation. But I just feel it's pertinent to do this to ensure that the board knows that we do support having two trustees.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden. I certainly support Counselor Elliott's report here. I have put forth the argument, I think a million times, that Middlesex County and all of our, our regions are agricultural in nature. And very often we get penalized for feeding the nation. Formulas and metrics based on population very often penalize an agriculturally influenced area. And we are, our vast expanse of farmlands obviously is going to affect our population. It's a trade that we have chosen, that we enjoy, and we should not be penalized for it in the sense that we have less representations on a board. And as we are a farming community, two trustees, I think, should remain and be in order, and we should not be penalized for putting food on the table. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else would like to comment on this motion? Counselor Burkhard Jessen, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. I will be supporting this motion and actually, I've actually directed our staff to bring it at the local level as well. I think that the more of us supporting this, the better. As Counselor Elliott said, it is something that is discussed at a, at a school board level regularly. But, you know, we can be strong advocates for our our Middlesex County representatives on the school board. I think we've all been well-served by them. And certainly going down to, to one representative will not benefit the concerns that we all have the way education is delivered in the county.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Smith?
I guess through the warden, just one comment, if we could also include our MPP and Minister Dutton on there as well. I see we have the Algen Middlesex London MPP Jeff York, but I think we should also have Monty McNotten on there as well.
Okay. Any other comments before I call the vote? Okay, so we have a mover and we have a seconder. So I am going to, again, make sure that I can see everybody. So anyone opposed? Seeing none, let's carry. Thank you. Okay, bylaws. Ten A, number seven one four five, a bylaw to authorize an asset management software agreement with PSD Citywide. So looking for a mover for that bylaw? Counselor Vanderheiden, seconded by? Counselor Rock, all in favor? Oh, you know what? No, all opposed. Right, so that's carried. Moving on now to ten B, number seven one four six, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the January eleventh, twenty twenty-two meeting of county council. So bylaws be given first and second reading and the bylaws be given third and final reading. So looking for a mover for those? Can't see, Counselor Richard, seconded by Counselor Brennan, all in favor? Good. Um, did I, Marcy, before I go ahead, I just want to double check. I don't know if I called for a third reading for the first one as well.
So typically, we just would, we just do the first and second reading of both bylaws and then a motion for third reading. So I think we're covered. I think we could just send that to both bylaws have first and second reading and.
Excellent. The moral of that story is always read your notes rather than looking at the agenda. Now we're moving into committee at the whole. Any delegations or reports of county officers? I don't see anything here.
We're gonna, we're gonna do them in camera, yeah.
Okay, and then action items, the eleven B one, new traffic signals on Middlesex County roads. And Mr. Trainee, I believe that's your report.
That is me, Madam Warden. Thanks very much. This is an annual report we do for our traffic signal analysis that our staff conduct in the fall of every year to look at potential candidates for signalization at intersections across the county. Just to remind council, traffic signals aren't primarily a safety device. They're really more there for the efficiency of the movement of traffic. And we use generally accepted guidelines that have been prescribed across the province for a number of years through the Ontario Traffic Manual. There's actually six different warrants we look at, four directly related to traffic. One is related to collisions and one is related to pedestrians. Since we're mainly a rural community, rural county, we don't see pedestrians ever trigger our traffic signal warrants. And fortunately, we don't see collisions trigger our traffic signal warrants. The collisions that we would count are collisions that would be prevented by the installation of traffic signals. And those are generally ones where people are trying to make a left turn or get through an intersection because they've been waiting so long to proceed through a stop sign. And those generally coincide with some of the traffic, total traffic warrants that we see at intersections or we analyze at intersections for traffic signals. So we did do manual accounts at three intersections this year. We actually did four. One, we had to discount just because of some issues with the counts themselves that we'll redo again next year. But the three that we did do, two that are very similar is, is two on Elderton Road, one on Adelaide Street and Elderton Road, and one at Wonderland and Elderton Road. Wonderland and Elderton Road did meet the warrants for total traffic. It is a very busy intersection, continuing to see additional traffic growth with the development in Elderton and other areas to the north of the city of London. At Adelaide and Elderton Road, not quite there, certainly not as much, seeing as much development or traffic movement on that side of Highway four. But again, we'll keep an eye on that intersection and we'll likely do another count there, not next fall, but we usually space them out by two years. The other intersection that we did the manual account at was at Glendon and Melbourne Road. Again, getting closer with regards to traffic warrants, but not seeing the volume that we would recommend installation of traffic signals at this time. And the types of collisions that we've seen at this intersection certainly would not be prevented by the installation of traffic signals and likely could be exacerbated, the severity of those types of collisions with traffic signalization, where it's not warranted at that intersection. The other one we get questions about quite often is Strathroy, the town of Strathroy. And there's another number of intersections we've been keeping tabs on over the last couple of years. Strathroy Care Dock, we're nearing the, the finalization of their transportation master plan, part of which should provide some guidance to the county with regards to intersection improvements, including and not limited to signalization. So we're anxiously waiting to see what the results of that study are going to be. And we'll come back to council with a full report on the recommendations of the transportation master plan as it pertains to the county road system in and around Strathroy, Mount Bridges and the municipality as a whole. So I think I will leave it at that, Madam Warden, and be happy to answer any questions about the report.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Trainee? Counselor Vanderheiden?
Yes, thank you through the warden. I have a couple of questions to, to Mr. Trainee. Just one question to do with the Strathroy piece. I know that we're getting that traffic report and I guess it makes sense to wait for that. But if we get that in a couple of months, can we revisit or do we have to wait a year till the next report?
Well, through the warden, to Counselor Vanderheiden, what we likely would do is we'll fast-track the design of any intersections that we're going to see improvements on in Strathroy Care Dock. So, you know, anywhere we would see signalization recommended, the, the kind of the issue in the urban areas, there's a lot more work to do, so there would be more design upfront. So we would get into the design of those intersections so we could fast-track those. Our experience has been when these reports get approved, the design happens and then we install the traffic signals in the fall or the late part of the year. If we were to see the results from the transportation master plan and Strathroy recommends some immediate recommendations for signalization, we would start the design right away and then likely see those signaledized in the spring of twenty twenty-three if the recommendation was to proceed with those. So they'd be far enough ahead, we would have the same design timeline. We just don't know what the rollout's going to be and how they're going to be staged and what the total recommendations are going to be at this, at this point. So I think we're a few months away from having those recommendations.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. And if I could, Madam Warden, I have two other points. One is my own on, on the Glendon and Melbourne Road and Mr. Trainee knows my thoughts on this. I think traffic counts are only one component of what happens at a corner. And, you know, the accidents that have happened there result in deaths. They're, they're not insignificant. So when you, when you mentioned that, you know, it'd be even more severe if there was a traffic light, well, I don't know how much more severe it can get. So I, if not that, then what? What? We've got the rumble strips and, and, you know, I just want to make sure that we don't just count on traffic counts because there's other things that happen at corners. And it's all about the safety of the people that go through there. And I, I know I scratch my head because I think, and this is going to be a controversial statement, but I think ninety-nine percent of accidents are driver error. But still that error causes death. So how can we prevent these things from happening? So that's just a statement. I just want to make sure that, you know, I, I, I am not in agreement with not doing anything at that corner. And if I could through Madam Warden, Counselor Mayhew had to leave and he mentioned that he wanted to make a comment and he sent this to Marcy and to myself. So if it's okay, can I read his comments?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, this is on behalf of Counselor Mayhew. My concern is if we base the introduction of traffic signals at intersections solely determined on traffic volume counts, there may be significant flaws in this approach. Considerations should include the speed at which traffic moves, the type of vehicles in a geographical region, example, heavy truck traffic, the history of collisions and near misses, and consideration of electors concerned. It is for these reasons that I wish traffic signal to be considered for Glendon, Glendon and Malver intersection. Traffic counts should not solely form the matrix in the decision. And he sincerely regrets that he's absent, but he had another event that he had to go to, but he wanted his, this discussion and he felt compelled to let everyone know what his concerns were.
Thank you. Any other questions? So we have a motion in front of us for the new traffic signals on Middlesex County Road. County Road sixteen, Elderton Road and County Road fifty-six, Wonderland Road, that'd be included in the twenty twenty-two capital budget. Looking for a mover? Counselor Burkhard Jessen, seconded by Counselor Corneliusson, all in favor? Oh, sorry, wait, hands down. Any opposed? One opposed?
And can I say, I'm not opposed to doing that one. I'm, I'm opposed to not doing one of the one. Okay. So I'm, I'm, it's, I'm split there. So I'm saying no, because I don't agree with the Glendon Drive one.
Got it. Okay. So moved. And now we're moving on to the correspondence and information items. Eleven point C one to eleven point C eight are the payables. Were there any questions about those specifically? One through eight. Seeing none, then I'm going to ask for a motion to accept them as presented. Counselor Brennan, seconded by Counselor Richards. Any discussion? Any? Seeing none. See Cathy? I'm getting on to that, all that opposed thing. All right, now we have items eleven C nine all the way to eleven C twenty-five. Now, is there any of those that anybody would like to discuss separately? Counselor Vanderheiden?
Eleven point one four.
Eleven point fourteen.
And I would, I'll be willing to answer any questions that there are on eleven twelve.
Wow, okay. Anybody else want to discuss anything separately? Counselor DeVito?
Thank you. Was eleven C twenty included at the bottom end of your list or did I jump ahead? Social services update from Cindy Howard.
Yeah, that's included, but that's.
I have a question on that one. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, anybody else? All right, so moving on to our first. Did you want to speak to the first, the OP alignment? Because I tell you, that was a really interesting report. I really enjoyed reading through that and I must say it was something that I thought was great. So if you have any comments, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden. I just don't know when we are going to have an opportunity to discuss this or whether it's all going to be done at committee. So that's why I wanted to throw a couple of my, my thought processes in there too, what's, what's on the page. Because I imagine this will come back to council when it's fully completed and then we'll have an opportunity. So I'm not sure if this is the right time or, so you want me to just go at it?
Yep.
Okay. When I looked at page nine six, or page six on the report, it talks about, where are we, page six, about agribusiness. And I, I think that is something that we really need to focus on in our communities because we are in agriculture. We are an agricultural county, and I think that that's really particularly important. But when I go to page eight, it talks about some of the considerations for agricultural and agribusiness opportunities. And I, I think it's really important for us to consider what some of these things mean, such as, and this has come to council before, having weddings, you know, a one-day wedding for a family member is one thing, but having your barn turned into a venue. When, when the last time we had this conversation, one of the neighbors actually would go to a hotel every weekend because he couldn't stay at his house. I think that is wrong. I think there has to be rules and regulations and things that we can put around that in order to, because that's not an agribusiness. That's using your business for something totally different. It's, it's not, I can't tie a wedding to an agribusiness. So I, I have concerns about that and concerts. I mean, again, And concerts, I mean, again, if this is something that's a family event, and you have a, a bylaw in the community that says yes for one night, you can, the noise bylaw, you, you can move it, that's fine. But when we start talking about things like concerts, on the one hand, I think, how cool is that? But then I start thinking of, well, if it's really successful, suddenly this becomes a yearly event, and all the neighbors are having a heart attack, and animals are having heart attacks. There's all kinds of things that happen that we're not paying attention to, that it's not an agribusiness. It's a business. So that, that's where I just wanted to throw that comment out. And then on page sixteen, it talks about quality of place, not quality of life. I really need to know what that means. On the face, I can figure it out, but I really want to have a better conversation and understanding of what that means, and how that relates to, to this particular plan, and, and how I need to brace my thought process to that. I don't, I don't understand it. And then on, on seventeen, county versus municipality, who maintains? It says the county is to maintain specific ten years through residential, that residential growth can be accommodated for a minimum of ten years through residential intensification, redevelopment, and if necessary, land, and what, which is designated and available for new residential. In my mind, and I could be absolutely wrong, and you could tell me that, that's fine, that is something that happens at the lower level to begin with, and it gets brought up to the county level for, for, for information and for acceptance, because the county is the, is the one that says yes or no when we have intensification, or for all our planning issues. But is it, is it, is it a record keeper that, that the county's being, or is, is a county now going to municipalities and saying, we need more land from you, or we need more? Like, how, how does that work? There's a, there's a level here that I'm not getting. So, and, and it's, I, I just don't understand how that, how that is going to roll out, and what is meant by that statement. So those are just some of the questions that I had on that after reading it.
Okay. So, thank you again for your comments, and it was a very interesting report to read. Now, I don't, Dirk's not here today, so he won't be able to answer any questions, but it's my understanding, and Bill, maybe you could continue with this conversation, is it was just an exercise in seeing how we aligned with other counties and the information that we gleaned from them to see how it affected our official plan?
Yeah, but I think it would be helpful. Like, there's nothing here that's, Marcy, you correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not trying to write anything in stone here, where it's an observational report, I guess. And I think what we'll, I don't have a better term for it than that. I think what we'll do is, that's great feedback, like, really fantastic feedback. We can't buy that kind of feedback. So what I'll do is I'll talk to Dirk about it. I expect that he'll be back in the next day or two, and then I'll talk to Dirk about it, and then we'll maybe have a conversation again at the next meeting, or, in the meantime, get some answers written out to council, and have a conversation at the next meeting. Because I, I think that Dirk would enjoy the opportunity to respond, and then also hear some other feedback as well. So if we could do that, that'd be great.
Okay. Yeah, it was just for information, but it was such a good report that it's worth having a discussion about it. Now, do we...
Well, I think, I think it is fundamental to other things we're doing. So I think Johann's right, that we need to sort of maybe debate and discuss some of these things now, because that's going to lead into other things we're doing in the next couple of months, and, and support it. So it is good debate to have.
Yep. And I think we've sort of talked, I know as a member of the Planning Advisory Committee, those are some of the topics that we've already touched on, you know, just lightly, so it's to be able to keep those in mind. Counselor Vanderheiden, you also mentioned eleven C fifteen. Did you want to talk about that one as well?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that after anybody, that everybody that's read it, if they had any questions on that, or if you think that we're headed in the right direction. I mean, we're all members of FCM as, as individual municipalities through county. The county is a member, so it makes all of us members. And these are the things that, that were highlights of our last meeting, the one we actually got to do in Ottawa as a, as a hybrid meeting. And I just wanted to make sure you understood that the things that we were doing and moving forward on, and if there's anything that you wanted to add, or anything that you had questions on, you don't have to do it today, but at any time, please, let me know, because we're working for you, and, and that's, that's the important part.
Okay. And that was, sorry, I'm just confirming, that was eleven C twelve.
Eleven C...
Yep.
Yes, that was the FCM report.
Yep, great. Thank you. Any questions for Counselor Vanderheiden? Nope. Okay, and I'm just gonna pop ahead to eleven C twenty. Counselor DeVet, the social services update that you pulled out. Did you want, any questions or concerns about that, or comments?
Yes, thank you, Warden. Through you to Cindy. Thank you for this report. I always find these really interesting. There are so many different variables and programs and items that are covered, and the interrelationships between all the players is really always interesting. I was looking specifically on page eight of nine, the social housing waitlist as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And it, it lists three years' worth of data identifying the total number of applications, and then it gives the total numbers housed. When I look at those numbers, there is absolutely no way that I can reconcile applications, even if half of them are not somehow meriting the service. I, I don't get how people, how do the gaps fill? How, how do we, I look at this, I just get depressed. Am I misinterpreting this chart? Or, or how do I make sense of this in, in a real way?
Good question.
Thanks, through the warden, to Counselor. You are correct, there is a number of applications, and individuals are not able to get into the social housing, so the waitlist continues to grow. They are able to house some individuals, which is great. But then, I guess, we would have to say I'd reach out to some of our programs, like social service relief funds that we're able to do, some of our CHIPI programs, some of our other programs that we're doing with our Community Navigator, is kind of how we fill some of the gaps until individuals can get housed. Or maybe in the future, we can get some other kind of affordable or social housing in place.
So, just an add-on, if I may. So then, do you have a good idea of how many of those people actually have a roof over their head, and what proportion would not? Because you do cover the, the temporary housing and motels in the navigator's role in, in the report. What happens to the others? Or how, how are those cases handled, do you know?
Yeah, through the warden to Counselor, I think that's a fabulous question, and you know what? I'm going to get back to you on that. I'll probably have to reach out to the City of London as the CMSM for housing to ask some of those questions, and then also meet with, I've got Joe Windsor on the call here today as well, and also our Community Navigator, and we'll get back to you at the next council meeting with a bit more of a fuller response to that question.
Okay, thank you. And, and actually, the other part of my thinking is, this is a report from the city that is the manager of the funding and so forth, and I know we, we fall into that category. We are part of that, that service model. The, there's no differentiation here between sort of the City of London numbers and Middlesex Center County, and Middlesex County numbers. Is this inclusive of the whole geography that is served, or is it only City of London residents in this chart? So does this include everybody, or does this include the City of London people?
Through the warden to Counselor, I just pulled out the piece that was identified for Middlesex County. So there are additional numbers that identify the City of London, that's just the county portion of numbers.
Okay, good. So this is only, okay, that's good. That's what I was wondering as well. Thank you.
Counselor Vanderheiden?
Since we were discussing this particular report, there was one question I had in there that I didn't put my hand up for, and it has to do with the Mental Health Association and the, and the work that we're doing with them. I, I know that throughout, and this was discussed with the Women's Caucus a lot as well, mental health and how that reflects in our communities, and how, how a, a lot of things, that's the base of some issues, and, and how do we deal with that? And, and how can we become stronger in pushing for mental health aids and assistance? Because I think that's one of the things that we, we've really seen throughout this pandemic, that are affecting people of, of every demographic and age level, and how, how do we be stronger in supporting the mental health, the agencies, and, and, and move that forward to help the people that are in real need?
Through the, through the warden to Counselor, I'd say I think a lot of the work that we've been doing in the last two years with the Social Service Relief Fund has been a huge stride forward in working with our community partners, whether it's mental health, homelessness. We've put together a lot of different committees, and the county, through either Joe Windsor, myself, or our staff are on some of those committees. So I think we are making strides toward understanding some of the issues in the county, some of the gaps, and trying to work towards some programs that maybe can address the gaps. There is still a lot of work to be done, but I think we have started to understand, again, some of the issues. And we've been very lucky to have the funding from Social Service Relief Funds that have really allowed us to do some unique programs. And I'm going to let Joe Windsor jump in, if you have anything you want, want to add.
Sure, thanks, Cindy, and through the warden to the counselor. So for that specific program with CNHA, the interim housing solution with the countryside motel, excuse me, we have a meeting tomorrow morning to discuss kind of what are the general criteria of folks getting supports through that, that program. And one of the main supports is through CMHA, ADSTV, as they have merged together. So CMHA, which is the Canadian Mental Health Association, and Addiction Services of Thames Valley. So not only are they going to be getting supports for mental health, but also through addiction pieces. There is also Family Service Thames Valley that is available for mental health supports through the county. And all five of our caseworkers are, are aware of these supports, and are offering those supports to all of our direct clients, and through Josh Smith, the Community Navigator as well. We're also taking a look at our longer-term clients that have been on assistance for a long period of time, which, as you stated, you know, mental health is one of our, the largest pieces for those folks. And we've been actually using a psychologist to, to help get onto OBSP, which is the Ontario Disability Support Program. Now, that does help financially, but we, in conjunction with that, we are, we are reaching out to our mental health supports in the county. So folks sure get financial support, but we also want to make, ensure that they're getting the mental health, addiction, or other supports that they, they need through the county.
Any, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. So we're going to backtrack here, we're going to go from eleven C nine all the way up to eleven C twenty-five. Looking for a motion to be received for information. Counselor Vanderheiden, seconded by Counselor DeVet, all in favor? Oh, sorry, wait. All against, that's going to be a hard habit to break. Anyone against? Seeing none, it's passed. All right, moving now on to inquiries. None. In new business, we're going to go into closed session, and I'm just going to advise that the next portion of the meeting is closed to the public, and at two twenty-four PM, to, to consider personal matters about identifiable individual and labor relations or employees' negotiations pursuant to sections two, three, nine, two B, and D of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. So I'm looking for a mover to go into closed. Counselor Richard, seconded by Counselor Burkhardt-Jessen. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, and then to close...